Our candidates are here. We're ready to go. We're sponsored tonight by the League of Women Voters of Sonoma County and the Petaluma Branch of the American Association of University Women, AAUW. It's great to see this turnout because we know the Giants are playing.[20.32][20.32](Laughter). Okay. The candidates have chosen by lot the seating order that they are in, and they have been told about our timekeepers. So, we are live. We want to thank PCA for broadcasting live and for rebroadcasting between now and Election Day Comcast Channel 27, AT&amp;T Channel 99, I believe. So, without further ado, we're going to get started. The moderator, I'm Kathy Schmidt, will be asking prepared questions, and then we will also be taking written questions from the audience. Our sponsors have only two questions to start with, and the rest of the questions are what the cardholders are giving us from the audience. All right? So, we have two candidates running for mayor, David Glass, Mike Kearns, and we have five candidates.[82.20][82.20](Laughter). I'm sorry. I said Mike Kearns. I meant Mike Harris.[86.20][86.20](Laughter). Five candidates running for three council seats, and I probably shouldn't say the names right. We have Chris Albertson, Dave King, Janice Kater Thompson, Ken Quinto, and Teresa Barrett. So, without further ado, we will begin. Question one. Having a problem with this.
Do we get an opening statement?
I'm sorry, you do.
You're welcome.[115.42][115.42](Laughter).
Can tell, I got screwed up with my mics. Opening statement of two minutes, starting with David Glass.
Thank you. It's nice to be here tonight. As your mayor for two terms, I share your love for our town and a strong commitment to continue working to make our community the best it can be. My wife and I are the proud parents of one child who was born, educated, and raised right here in Petaluma. While you know me as your mayor, you may also remember me as a broadcaster for the San Francisco Giants, who are winning four to nothing tonight in the postseason playoffs, and as a radio talk show host on KSRO. My goals for the next term are to relieve traffic congestion, fix our streets, and, most importantly, to be fiscally responsible for you. The plan proposed for Highway 101 is to widen it, lift it, and raise it, and this presents us with an opportunity to achieve a Rainier undercrossing of the freeway. This is a project I have fully supported since it became a realistic possibility. Unlike a previous project, which was financially far beyond our means, the current Rainier undercrossing is a plan that is achievable, and therefore, one that I have and will continue to support. The most significant reason for the Rainier undercrossing becoming achievable is the fact that I was able to secure more than $11 million in financing, and that $11 million is the most ever actually achieved toward the financing of the Rainier project. Continuing to use my financial expertise and communications skills to further the interests of our community at every available opportunity, I look forward to setting in place fiscally responsible funding plans which will guarantee that your money is spent as you intend, and that is why the Press Democrat endorsed my candidacy for reelection, and I hope that you will give me your vote on Election Day, November 4th. Thank you.
Mike Harris.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters of Sonoma County and the American Association of University Women of Petaluma for putting this candidate forum together. It's a great opportunity for everyone to get together and talk about the issues. Obviously, my name is Mike Harris, and I've been honored to serve on the city council since being elected in 2002. Now, I'm running for mayor, and I'd be honored to be your next mayor. I've served as vice mayor in a few commissions that I've served on. I've served as the chairman of the Transit Advisory Committee for the city. I've served as the chairman of the Youth Commission for the city. I've also served as the chairman of the Technology Advisory Committee for the city. And I'm also an executive for a local financial services company here in town, and we employ about 160 employees here in town. And I feel that that's the right balance that we need for our next mayor, to have the balance of the business acumen, and of course, with the experience of being a council member as the next mayor. There's a lot that's going to be discussed tonight, so if there's something that's missed, feel free to visit my website at harrisforpetaluma.com, or just call me at 773-3196. During the campaign, I've talked about three main points. First is traffic circulation in town. First off, the Rainier Crosstown Connector. I've been a steadfast supporter of the Rainier Crosstown Connector since inception. If I'm honored to be the mayor, I'll continue to be that. And also, economic development is a key component in town. In order to move forward with all the things that people promised during campaigns, we need economic development in town and revenues to pay for it. And then, obviously, number three is our general infrastructure. Our roads are in disrepair, our sidewalks, and we need more economic development in order to pay for those. I've been honored to be endorsed by the Petaluma Peace Officers Association, the Petaluma Fire Association, the Sonoma County Sheriff, Steve Freitas. And if you go to my website at harrisforpetaluma.com, you can see the 600 endorsements I already have in this race for mayor. So, I'd be honored with your vote tonight, and again, harrisforpetaluma.com.
Chris Albertson.
Hello, and my thanks to the sponsors of tonight's event, and thanks to you who've come out tonight during the ballgame to watch and listen to the candidates for city council and for mayor, and to those people watching at home either tonight or in the future as they watch the replays of this event. My name is Chris Albertson, and I'm a candidate for reelection to the Petaluma City Council. I've served 42 years in local government, 38 years in the fire service, the last almost seven here as the city fire chief of the city of Petaluma. Last four years, I have been the sitting council member here for the city of Petaluma. I believe that the best predictor of future behavior, looking at the new council, January 2015, best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. After four years on the city council, I am a known commodity. You'll see, you can look up my votes, you can watch the meetings, you can see what has happened, you agree with me. Take that in consideration. You don't agree, and you look at one of the other candidates. But my votes, I will stand behind them, and I will be glad to defend them if you want to call or contact me at my email address. I have a website, electalbertson.com. I encourage you to go to it and look at it. There is also an email address to contact me. I look forward to hearing from you, and I look forward to serving the next four years of city council with your assistance. Thank you for turning out tonight.
Good evening. Am I on?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Dave King, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the AAUW for sponsoring this event. I'd also like to thank Brandon Crawford for hitting a grand slam in the top of the fourth, and hopefully, when this is over, the Giants will have another day to play. My wife and I, my wife Lynn and I moved to Petaluma in 1991. We raised our two daughters here, one of whom is still in high school, and the other, who is a graduate of Petaluma High and a college graduate. I've had an opportunity to work in Petaluma for over 20 years. I work as a lawyer. I have my own practice, and thus, I operate my own business. I do employment law, representing employees and small businesses in employment disputes, and employees in civil rights cases. Having the opportunity to live and work in Petaluma for all this time has allowed me to participate in the community in a very broad way. I coached youth sports for 16 years, 30 teams, mostly girls, in softball, basketball, and soccer. I had the opportunity to be on the boards of the Petaluma Chamber of Commerce and the Petaluma People's Services Center, an organization that serves seniors and youth in our community, and is the largest social services agency in southern Sonoma County. When the Youth Commission was formed, I was one of the first youth commissioners, and I was its first chair. This is an opportunity that I've been given by being able to live and work here in town. My goals, if elected, are going to focus on getting the Rainier Crosstown Connector built. We have a traffic mess in the city, and it needs to be fixed. I'd also like to focus on roads and infrastructure and park expansion. I support the urban growth boundary, something that is needed and important in this community, and I look forward to having a good debate tonight or discussion tonight, and I ask for your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Janice Kater Thompson.
Thank you. I'm Janice Kater Thompson, and I'm a third-generation Petaluman, and actually, I was looking at the picture of my family, and I realized, you know, between my children and grandchildren, we're actually five generations, which is really surprising. As a community leader and past member of the Petaluma City Council, I have a record of accomplishments, accomplishments I am proud of. I worked with neighborhood groups to get the first urban groundery on the ballot, and it passed with over 70 percent. I voted in favor of our first all-weather soccer field. I worked with local and state agencies to get $4 million in grant funding for our wastewater treatment facility to fund miles of interconnecting public trails from Ellis Creek to Scholenberger Park to the Sheraton. The Washington-McDowell intersection improvements, the new northbound on-ramp and southbound auxiliary lanes from Washington Street to the Lakeville Highway exit were projects I worked on. These projects made traffic flow better and made it safer getting on and off our freeways. The Deer Creek Center. I worked closely with the developer to get the amenities for the Park Place neighborhood, and the entire community benefited. We negotiated for new fencing landscaping and a lit crosswalk at Rainier and Rushmore Avenue. Deer Creek was saved, and the new East Side Dog Park is busier than ever. It's, um, there's dogs everywhere. I had no idea there were so many dogs in my neighborhood until this dog park opened. So, I think it's really been a good connection for our neighborhood, the Deer Creek. We have a lot of trails connecting to Lynch Creek, and it's kind of exciting if you live in the area. Water. We have issues facing our city. Water's the biggest issue. We're in a drought. We have to deal with what we're going to do with that. We need to make sure that we get purple lines, water to the purple lines on the west side of town. 84 percent of the public want transportation dealt with, and I plan on doing that, and I have a record of doing that in the past and getting funding, and I will continue doing that. The fairgrounds, we need to address. We'll talk about Measure Q later, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Ken Quinto.
Thank you for inviting us to speak tonight. It is nice to have a packed house. When I've been here, usually, I'm standing there at the microphone, addressing the council. It's very exciting to be part of this. I have been involved with different organizations in my tenure here in Petaluma. My sons are here tonight instead of home watching the games. I'm very proud of them for being part of the process. I'm on the executive board of the Petaluma Little League, Petaluma American Little League, not the national ones unfortunately, but we're still an important commodity in town. I am a site council member of Kenilworth Junior High, an active member of the W.A.S. School District, when my kids were there at the W.A.S. School District, and I'm advisory to the Petaluma Panthers Football Organization, just very involved with the city. I think that we're at a time in Petaluma where we can make change for the better. We can have better roads, better parks, a better place to grow a business, a better place to raise a family. It's a very unique, exciting time to be here in Petaluma. The economy's getting better, things are going up. We need to have a city council that makes good, sound choices. Leadership in Petaluma is about representing the interests of the entire city, not just one neighborhood, or one interest, or one group in town. I live in the northeast quadrant of town. It's been an underrepresented portion of town for a long time. We have issues with Rainier trying to get across town. We need to get Rainier built. There's a part of the city council to where we need to have representation on the rest of the town. I support Petaluma's strategic growth plan, keeping in mind the impacts of traffic, keeping the charm that makes Petaluma unique. I'll work to repair our parks, both athletic and recreational, for all ages. Work tirelessly on solutions to get the roads repaired and get that Rainier Crosstown Connector built. I'm known for my commitment, my hard work, work ethic, and getting things done. I'd appreciate your vote.
Teresa Barrett.
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and the AAUW of Petaluma, two organizations of which I am a member, and I'm happy and proud to be a member of these groups that just brought us the school board debate and forum, which was very well attended and really a very good introduction to that race as well. So, I hope those of you in the audience or watching this at home who haven't seen that will make time to watch that, because I think that's a very important race coming up ahead of us too, on November 4th. Long introduction to say, my name is Teresa Barrett, and I have been a member of this community for over 35 years. I raised my children here, and I have volunteered at almost every level and in many, many groups throughout the community. I have been involved with city government for six and a half years on the planning commission, and now eight years as an elected city council member. I'm running for my third term and really looking forward to it, because I really do believe that it's important that we get somebody on this council who listens to the people of Petaluma and hears what they have to say. Someone who can, is an ear for people to talk to about their concerns, and actually tries to look at projects in terms of how they meet the needs of the people who live here. So, I hope you'll consider voting for me on my third time for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you all. Our first question will begin with our mayoral candidate, David Glass, and it will be the same question for everyone. Do you support choice for Clean Power by joining Sonoma Clean Power? If Petaluma joins Sonoma Clean Power, will you ensure the city of Petaluma is a Sonoma Clean Power customer?
Thank you for the question. I've done a great deal of research on Sonoma Clean Power in the last year. I've met with Supervisor Goran, Jeff Seifers, the executive director. Petaluma is on a strong track to have this issue come before us on November 17th at the city council. The deadline for Petaluma to join Sonoma Clean Power without paying an entry fee is the end of January of 2015. I am confident that we will meet that deadline and become a partner with Sonoma Clean Power. We've done our due diligence. We've explored other opportunities. They've had an opportunity to become more than a startup. They now have a track record, which is important. So, much of the exposure that you might have felt there has been wrung out of it. There was something called a death spiral in the original proposal as a danger. It doesn't look like that's going to happen. They're off to a good start and succeeding, and I anticipate enjoying a vote of positivity to join Sonoma Clean Power.
Thank you. These are one-minute responses. Mike Harris.
Thank you. When this issue came before us months ago, I think it was appropriate for us to hold off and do the due diligence that was necessary to see it go through the process. I've been in the unique position of being on the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, where I've actually received monthly updates in respect to getting the updates of how it's going through the process, and I'm excited about what's in front of us. Recent, we had an analysis in a forum down here in Petaluma, which some people participated in, and it was great to see the information in front of us that Sonoma Clean Power and the latest analysis would actually be cheaper than PG&E. So, I anticipate myself on November 17th, when that comes before us, before the council, and after reviewing the staff report that's done the due diligence on this, to actually vote in the affirmative as well, to give the consumers in Petaluma a choice between the two.
Thank you. Chris Albertson.
Thank you. Again, and you've already heard, this has come before the city council once before. There was some hesitancy at that time. Two things that came up. The track record issue, which has been addressed, they're off and running and doing a fairly reputable job. The other issue, and it was an issue for me, was the opt-out issue of the Sonoma Clean Power, that people were put into it, and my fear was there would be those in the community that didn't understand that their billing was being transferred to another company. I think the education that has been taking place over the course of time has alleviated some of that, and more will take place as it moves forward. I will be looking for a positive vote. I want to hear more from the community. I want to hear from Sonoma Clean Power, but I do believe that this will be received well by the council when it comes back before us in November.
Thank you. Dave King.
Yes. Oops. I haven't spent much time up here, as you can tell. Oh, on the other side. I think the city council made the right decision a year ago to be cautious about jumping into Sonoma Clean Power. Since then, as the other candidates have indicated, there's an indication that at least to some degree, the rates are a little bit lower with Sonoma Clean Power. That's certainly a reason to support it. I don't believe it's generated much in the way of Clean Power in reality just yet, but I think by joining it, it will create a 500,000-person market here in the county that will push providers to provide solar and wind energy and other alternative methods to electricity. So, I think the city council should support it on November 17th. I won't be there, even if I do get elected, but I would hope that you would give the citizens of Petaluma that opportunity.
I agree that I think the city council should support it. There are different tiers, and so, you can pay different levels, and so, you can actually look at your bill and you can make your own decision whether you want to be in or you want to opt out. And if you get in, you can still opt out, but there are three different tiers, and so, you can kind of choose where you want to go, because PG&E at one point is cheaper than the other, but if you look at it, you just have to decide what's best for you. And so, I think it's actually a good opportunity for the community, because people can opt in or out, and you just need to read more about it, but I think it's very positive.
Thank you. Ken Quinto.
I was for, just like Dave here, I was for Sonoma Clean Power as soon as I heard about it. I loved having the opportunity for another alternative energy source. I think that it's something that is the future. It's something that we're role models as government to the children and to younger generations, and how we're looking at the future, trying to have energy companies look at other ways to deliver power. Then, the customers could opt out. They have a choice. Give the people a choice. I wanted the choice. I didn't have it yet. It looks like the city's moving for that, which is wonderful. We don't want to have to go to Marin Clean Power later and have to pay more for it, keep it in Sonoma. It's a good form of energy, and I hope that they vote for it in November.
Thank you, Teresa Barrett.
Okay, so, there's no city attorney here, so I don't know if the four of us being up here and saying how we're going to vote on something constitutes a Brown Act violation, but (laugh) in the spirit that it does not, I will say that I am going to be supporting Sonoma Clean Power. I have been a big fan of community choice aggregation when that whole concept was brought up many years ago, but I do think that our city took the right steps in looking at this very carefully and making sure that the fiduciary questions were responded to correctly, and that we understand that not only we as consumers are protected, but the city of Petaluma is protected. And part of the question was, would, do you think the city should be covered by Sonoma Clean Power? And yes, I do. If we are going to join it, I think the city should be there too.
Thank you. Question number two, and we will begin this time with Mike Harris. We'll alternate each time as we go down. The city's stormwater and water infrastructure is aging. Where does repair and maintenance of this rank in your priorities, and how will it be funded?
Well, it's a huge priority, especially when we're a city that was established in the 1800s. There's a huge infrastructure issue, and I know that through economic development, that's one of the key components. So, if we grow the pie and bring business to town, expand the tax base, that's very helpful. One of the other pieces, and I'm sure we'll have another question on Measure Q later on that's longer, but that's obviously, in Measure Q, one of the opportunities, if people choose to vote for Measure Q, that could be a funding mechanism to pay for that as well. So, I'm sure that'll be more of a question later on, but that's the primary answer.
Thank you. Chris Albertson.
Thank you. The stormwater situation in town is an antiquated system. The pipes have been down for a long while, and as you all know, it empties almost every drop of it out into the river. Environmental issues are part of that, and those need to be taken into consideration too. In funding for the stormwater is going forward, I had anticipated, because I do support the one cent sales tax, using the, some of the revenues from that for helping fund the stormwater that needs to be done. Infrastructure in the city needs to be addressed, and asphalt, paving, and these other necessary improvements, infrastructure, need to be repaired. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave King.
Thank you. Infrastructure is a problem in this city. We have horrible roads that have about an $80 million hole in them, literally. We have pipes that are old and aging, and a disaster could occur with a water main break. There's been a number of them in the city. Funding is the issue. I don't think it's the political will necessarily, and that's how we need to solve the problem. I do support Measure Q. The voters will decide that in November. If Measure Q does not pass, I think the candidates need to tell the voters what they plan to do or things should be done to try to address our funding issues with relation to infrastructure. If Measure Q passes, I do pledge to have money attached to that measure, go to the Rainier Crosstown Connector, as well as major infrastructure improvements in this city. If it does not, we need to look at other options, including a 50-50 tax measure, or something along those lines that is more palatable to the voters, but we can't let this sit, because it's a real problem in the city.
It's true. I mean, this is a major problem. Petaluma's over 150 years old, and we have a lot of aging pipes. This isn't a new issue. It's been going on for a long time, but we have to address it. I do not support Measure Q for this funding source, but I do believe that we need to have a funding source and possibly a tax measure specifically for infrastructure. And infrastructure means our roads, Crosstown connectors, everything that we have above the ground, there's a whole city below the ground, so we have to look at it, and we have to address it. And it's been, I think the city's doing a fairly good job of trying to keep up with it, but there's just so much that needs to be done, and so, there has to be a funding source. I would like to see specifically funding for infrastructure, and this is one of the infrastructures that would be done, and at the same time, when you've got the roads open, you need to do other infrastructure below the ground, not just one thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Quinto.
Thank you. The, yeah, infrastructure has been an issue here for a while, and it's been the funding. We've had, we not only have stormwater issues, but we also have water delivery issues, where we have pipes that are aging and need to be replaced. So, water going, water coming. It's something that has to be looked at, and the funding needs to be there. I mean, continuing economic development is key in order to get funding into the city. You have issues with the station plan, that we're going to bring some development into town to make funding. Issues with the Riverfront Project, getting that development going, so that way, we can bring funding into the city. Looking at the fairgrounds, the land that's underutilized, bringing some development, bringing some funding into the city. Bringing in some funding over, like, absence of Measure Q, that's for roads and infrastructure, but bring in some development, so we can get some funding to take care of the infrastructure, the pipes, the water delivery, the water exit.
Thank you, Teresa Barrett.
Well, the water and stormwater infrastructure that is aging, I do agree with all the previous speakers about that, is not going to be solved by bringing in new development, because the impact fees they pay will be for the impacts they cause, not the impacts that already exist in our city. So, that is not a potential source for solving that problem. I do think it is a problem that we absolutely need to solve, and I think part of the problem is that stormwater doesn't get to be treated like wastewater, because it is not part of a closed-loop system, but it actually is wastewater, and it really, we probably need to see if we can get that fixed. But it is a serious issue, and yes, we will have to have a funding mechanism to do that.
Thank you. David Glass.
Been talked a lot that Measure Q is the remedy. It may very well prove to be the disease. There's nothing about Measure Q that separates the money to go to anything specifically. It's a blank check. It's forever. It's too high at 1%. It's too long at forever, and it's too loose in that the money can be spent any way that this or future city councils forever wish to spend the money. So, we can pretend it's for storm drain. We can pretend it's for Rainier. It can be for absolutely anything at the desire of a city council. So, the question becomes, why didn't the city council put a measure for infrastructure on the ballot, as council member Barrett and I attempted to do? We tried to do that. It didn't fly. I think that in two years, it will fly, and so, Measure Q, as the Press Democrat says in the endorsement of me, could very well exacerbate our problems, but if it passes, they recommend me as the mayor to guide that money where you want it to go.
Thank you. Well, this question from the audience pretty much follows along this line, and we will begin with Chris Albertson. Polls indicate that the road conditions and traffic congestion are citizens' key issues. Where does this rank in your priorities, and would you earmark tax money for the Rainier Crosstown Connector Road, and how would you assure that it is saved for that? And how would you assure that it is saved for that? And we can do one and a half minutes on this.
So the roads are an issue and this is one of the things that will be discussed this coming Monday, October 6th, here in this room. Council will set the priorities for the one cent sales tax, the Measure Q money. And I can tell you that my priority on this, and it's been the priority stated by every council member, all the people sitting up here, asphalt, asphalt, and asphalt. The Rainier Crosstown is a major component of this funding mechanism. So that's what I would like to see have happen. The roads need to be fixed. The roads have been discussed here for decades. The low index on pavement for years and the repair is possible and this is a solution. So that's what I would see to have happen. The Rainier Crosstown Connector, the freeway on and off ramps there, I think are an add-on. But the connector, getting people back and forth from the east side, west side, is very necessary to take some of the strain off the North McDowell and Washington intersection. So that's what I would hope to see have happen. I think the concern about where's the money going to go, the commitments will be made and we'll see where those commitments are. You'll see August 6th, or excuse me, October 6th, that the commitments will come down to asphalt and Rainier and infrastructure for this city. Thank you.
Dave King.
Measure Q is anticipated to raise $10 million a year for the general fund. If I was elected and Measure Q passed, I would advocate for at least a quarter of that money to go to road and infrastructure repair on an annual basis. We need a plan specific to the city and to dedicate by vote that money for the roads and infrastructure at a minimum. In addition, as to Rainier, if I'm elected and Measure Q passes, I would advocate for an allocation on the first two to three or four years, however long it takes, for, into a fund to cover part of the Rainier construction and make sure that the remaining money was not bonded out or used so that Rainier could not be built. The council, when it put this on the ballot, represented to the people that those would be two of the priorities and I support those priorities. In addition, if Measure Q fails, I think the next council has the burden of figuring out how to fix these problems. We may consider a 50-50 ballot measure where, similar to the county measure that's anticipated in the spring, where there's an advisory measure associated with a 50% threshold for a vote that advises specifically about what the funds to be used, could be used for, either for the roads or Rainier or both. So that's another mechanism. And lastly, at least for Rainier, we can consider the infrastructure financing district bill that was just signed by the governor as a potential mechanism for funding Rainier by way of vote. But we have to do this and the people have to have something that they can believe in when they vote.
I would think that the public would want to believe in what they're voting for before, when you put it on the ballot. You have to let the public know what they're getting. So what are we coming back? A month, two months later and we're saying, okay, this is what we're going to do? Well, that's not the way you put a ballot measure on the ballot. Normally, you need to tell people what you're doing with it. And I think that this community would have supported a half a cent sales tax specifically for infrastructure. And that's what it would have gone to and I really, and I would have worked to make sure that it happened, that it passed. But having a 1% and then coming back weeks later and saying, oh, by the way, this is what we're going to do with it, there's no teeth to that. So we really don't know where the money's going to be going. But I do believe that we could get, we could have gotten a half a cent sales tax and it would have passed for infrastructure. We do need a Crosstown Connector. We need more than one. We have Corona that is not updated, which the state should pay for. One thing about Rainier, it is not a state or federally funded projects because it is not regional. Corona is regional. That's why you would get funding for Corona Road. So if the city's going to move forward on Rainier, we need to understand it will be paid for by the citizens of this town and you will not get state or federal funding. We could use a southern crossing. You have D Street, Lakeville, and the Boulevard completely blocked up now. And so if you had a southern crossing where the roundabout is, where all the freeway work is being done now, you would, may get a better bang for your buck.
Thank you. Ken Quinto.
You asked what priority would traffic relief be? It is D priority. There is not one higher right now. I live behind G and G Market. Took me 28 minutes to get here.
Can you hear me? I think you could hear me before. I mean, 28 minutes to get from behind G and G here tonight. Backed up Corona Road all the way to the service station there, where they work on cars. I mean, it should not take that long to get across town. I mean, and then scaring people about Measure Q. That's going to go places that we don't want it to go. Well, as your city government, by gosh, that's what the people want. They want the roads fixed. They want Rainier put in. Put some transparency in there. Make a special fund for that. Don't be scared. Don't say, well, there's processes that we can't do that. Gosh darn it, you're the government. You can make a fund for that. You can do something if you're not scared about it. That's what the people are voting for. If they vote for Measure Q, then we're stewards of the city. We should figure out a way, as a governing body, seven people, to figure out a way to take that percentage that the people vote on and put that into the roads and infrastructure. I mean, you've got roads and infrastructure, fixing potholes, public safety. You need to have those things done to make the city work correctly. Right now, it's not and the government has to take that on.
Teresa Barrett.
Okay, but don't forget to add storm water and water sewer infrastructure. You know, it is a big and unmet need that we have in this city and that is what I think does make people worried about the generalness of Measure Q. As the mayor mentioned earlier, he and I tried to put on the ballot a half cent sales tax for a specific amount of time, absolutely dedicated to the roads, road repair and traffic relief. And we did this not because we think that that's the number one issue. It is one of the two top issues or maybe one of the top four issues, but so is water, one of the top issues, and that is a crucial issue that we haven't addressed yet tonight. But because we put that on, because that is what the people of Petaluma who were polled told us they want it to have addressed. 84% of the people who responded to the voter poll that we took in this city said they want traffic relief and they want their roads repaired. That's what we should have done and that's what I wish I were up here advocating for. But I'm not going to advocate for Measure Q because it is too loose and it does not really address the things that the Petaluma voters said they wanted.
David Glass.
The question is earmarking funds for Rainier. How do you like the earmarks from Congress? Earmarks leaves a lot of wiggle room, doesn't it? Here's a ballot statement that was put out in 2004 and it passed and council members at the time put it on and promised to not allow the environmental impact report for any development proposal to utilize the Rainier Crosstown Connector and Interchange project as assumed traffic mitigation until such time as necessary. All environmental impact reports have been certified. Here's a broken promise. This is the draft environmental impact report. That promise also says in that ballot measure that all funds to construct the project have been identified and secured. They finally identified what might be a source, your tax dollars, but we wouldn't want to guarantee that, would we? Just trust us with a blank check. So good intentions can go astray. I come from the municipal bond field. We don't take good intentions. We take hard, iron-clad contracts and that is exactly what this city should be provided. If you're going to be taxed extra, you need to know where your extra tax dollars are going to go and they need to go how you want them spent, not how politicians want to spend them for you. And this is too loose, too high, and too long, according to the Press Democrat. There's an independent source for you and that's why they endorse my campaign. If this passes, you need me. Thank you.
Mike Harris.
Well, thank you. One of the highest priorities in the city is the Rainier Crosstown Connector and infrastructure. I've been a steadfast supporter of the Rainier Crosstown Connector. I pushed to have two project study reports to analyze Rainier. I pushed for it to be the comprehensive transportation plan. My opponent just referred to the measure from 2004, Measure S. He actually signed the ballot argument against Rainier at that time. On top of that, we just had the Malongueire discussion a couple of years back and side, one of the conditions of approval was two acres set aside for the plan line for Rainier. He voted against that. I voted for it. So he has a history of voting against Rainier and I, if I'm elected mayor, I will be a steadfast supporter of the Rainier Crosstown Connector and Interchange. On top of that, our roads and infrastructure and our own potholes, we need relief there. If Measure Q did pass, once the issue is actually certified by the county, there's 110-day waiting period by the State Board of Equalization. During that period, we can have bond council and we can immediately have a roadmap to actually start fixing our streets. So year one, we can start fixing roads if this passes. So there's a mechanism in play. So I'll continue to support the Rainier Crosstown Connector and Interchange. I've been a steadfast supporter the whole time I've been on the council and I'll continue if I'm honored to be the mayor of this city.
Thank you. It seems that we're back to funding again. Where does this money come from if it isn't the taxes? One of the next questions, and we begin with Dave King. With Petaluma's unfunded pension liability in the $48 million range, how do you plan to fund it?
With my piggy bank. No one has the answer to that problem. If we did, it would be solved and the people who have been on the city council or mayors over the past 10 years would have solved it. This problem began 15 years ago. It is a serious problem for the city. The state needs to give the city tools to negotiate with the unions and the unions need to negotiate in good faith. This is not something that can be decided on high here on the city council. It is a union negotiation and the union members and the city have to negotiate in good faith to try to resolve it. The city made one good step recently on the two-tier system that they put in place, but there's very little that the city can do without state action. If there was an answer to this problem, I think you're going to hear it in the next seven answers. It's a difficult problem. Fortunately, the market has done better the last few years and the liability is down. It's also a liability that's extended over about 30 years. So as bad as the problem is, it's maybe not as bad as we think.
Thank you, Janice Cader-Thompson.
Dave's right. I mean, there is not an easy answer for this, but there has been talk about using the Measure Q money to pay the 48 million. I mean, that has been verbalized, you know, at meetings. And I don't know if that's a good idea or if it's a bad idea, but we have to address it. And it's not that easy to address because we're dealing with the states, we're dealing with the unions, and we all have to work together to come up with a solution. And I have to say, I do not have a really good answer for that, but we're going to have to address it and we're going to have to, I mean, truly address it and deal with it. And that's all I have to say about it because I'm honestly not sure. Thank you.
Ken Quinto.
Not to piggyback on all that, but there is, you know, 30 years where that gets, that's spread out. Retirement options are important for all employees and public and private and you have to have employees pair their, pay their fair amount into those. They have to negotiate contracts on good faith. All of those things need to happen. The employees have already got into a two-tier system to where they're trying to fix that as it goes on, but you need the state legislature's help. You need CalPERS to have good investments and now that the economy is being better, investments are starting to come back. We're not an insolvent city. We never will be. There will be ways, they've never met, they've never not met their obligations and they will. There will be creative ways that that happens. I'm not scared that it's not going to happen. I am willing to work with people to try to figure out how to get it funded because that's important, but I'm not worried that it's not going to get funded. We're going to get it done. There's very smart people working on this.
Okay, thank you. You know, I agree with the other four speakers that, you know, this is a problem that really is very, very difficult and it was certainly asked during the interview process with the Press Democrat. And one of the questions that was asked is why our council hasn't taken a position of saying, we want our budget for public safety. Because, you know, when we're talking about the pension issue or the unpaid liabilities, we're really talking about the public safety pensions because they are a special breed apart from the rest of the pensions that the other people who work for the city get. So let's not mince around that. But, you know, take a stand about that and, you know, I said it's just never been discussed in our city and, you know, maybe this is something that we need to look at as a council to take a policy decision on how we're looking at these things going forward.
Thank you, David Glass.
One of the dangers of Measure Q is that it provides unrestricted funds. There's 10 collective bargaining units, but the ones that are really driving the unfunded pension liability are the exorbitant pensions at police and fire. I don't think in the private sector you could find pensions like this and that's the major portion of the unfunded liability. One of the dangers that we're going to see is contract negotiations asking for pay raises on the pay scale because through longevity and what's called step increases, there are pay raises anyway built into the system. But if additional pay raises are awarded in negotiation and collective bargaining, that affects the cost of the pensions and explodes that pension liability. And that's the danger, is that the money is directed in an area that the taxpayer doesn't want it and it explodes the liability without increasing the services and increases that liability exponentially with greater pay raises, greater multiplier, and larger pensions.
Mike Harris.
As mentioned earlier, the unfunded pension liability is approximately $48 million spread over the 30 years. That's from an actuarial study from, that's a few years old now. And fortunately, the PERS returns have been high, 12 and about 18% in the last two fiscal years, so our pension liability is probably lower than that. But the council actually did some great things over the last couple of years. We did the two-tier system back in 2012. The state ended up doing theirs as well, so it really ended up a third tier as well. So that'll bend the cost curve in the future. Admittedly, it doesn't do much in the current time. So then what do we do now? As been mentioned before, there's some state action that needs to take place so we have more arrows in our quiver when we're discussing this with the unions. There are certain things I would want to push for from certain caps on benefits long-term so you don't see those exorbitant pensions that are actually in the headlines and those types of things. So we would work towards that and we would have to collectively bargain that and hopefully as a council, as I talked about earlier, there'll be some policy direction.
Chris Albertson.
Thank you. Discussion here this evening about Measure Q being used for pensions, I hope, I hope that you do your homework and you look at this, a due diligence. It's a scare tactic. We're trying to tell you that that's not the issue. Employees' benefits, pensions are negotiated item at the bargaining table. They're negotiated in good faith. And for Petaluma, there was a resolution passed back in 2001 that created the pensions for our employees today. The city did a voluntary, the employee group met with all of them, met with management and they voluntarily, voluntarily agreed to the second tier. That was back in 2012. In January 2013, the state passed PURPA, the Public Employees Pension Reform Act, which made in fact a third tier on the city of Petaluma, a second tier for other cities. Our pensions are the same as other municipalities. They're not unique here. Thank you.
Thank you. This question, we begin with Janice Cader-Thompson. Please explain your position regarding the urban growth boundary and floodplain development.
I support our urban growth boundary and I will continue supporting it. We don't want to look like, you know, San Jose, you know, Sunnyvale, everything, you know, interconnecting and that's, I know what people of Petaluma do not want to see. I'm sorry, I missed the second part.
Floodplain development?
Oh, floodplain development. I've always been against floodplain development and the big concern is, when they recently had the discussion about Rainier, you had the factory outlet people come and they said that they wanted their access road onto Rainier and then you had the Shasta Avenue, there's an access road that's showing that that would go onto Rainier and all of these areas feed into the floodplain. And we spent over $40 million on a flood control project. And what the flood control project, what it stated was upstream development will not be protected by this flood control projects. It's where the weir is and downstream. And so if we continue to build in the flood- the weir is and downstream. And so if we continue to build in the flood area, we're going to have more flooding, and our $40 million project will not succeed.
Ken Quinto.
I totally support the urban growth boundaries. I think that keeping the city contained and not going out, we're not going to lose our farms, lose our countryside, which was what helps make Petaluma unique. Infill developments in places that already exist that we can do development, look for places there. Look for places we can put near the train. Look for places we can put near downtown where buses are at. Look for places that we can put inside the city, not going out. As far as the floodplain development, we shouldn't do it. We flooded here many times before. I remember taking the kids out and going and looking around and seeing, if it wasn't for the SUV, I couldn't get around town. So we have to be very diligent that we do not develop in the floodplain. With Rainier, we have to be an aggressive council when that goes through, to be sure that that ends up being a parkway, ends up being some way to where, when we cross to the other side of town and that thing gets done, that it is purely a crosstown connector. We need to keep that floodplain there.
Teresa Barrett.
I agree with Mr. Quinto about the crosstown connector. I do like alternate B, and that is part of that draft EIR that the mayor was referencing earlier, because it doesn't stop between Rainier and Petaluma Boulevard. So it does not allow for more development in the floodplain that the Rainier Crosstown Connector would go over. I think that any development in the floodplain is irresponsible. Not only is it irresponsible because of the effect that it would have on the people who are down, downwater from that development, but it's, it's a bad use of our $43 million flood protection that we've already put in, and which is based on the fact that you don't make it worse upstream. And secondly, the urban growth boundary, I think, is sacrosanct, and I'm not even in favor of any of the expansion areas. Thank you.
David Glass.
I have a strong record on both of these issues, and that's why I'm endorsed by the people that endorse me, and you can go to the website and consult that. Urban growth boundary, it's every bit as much economical benefit as it is environmental and aesthetic. It's what contains the services that have to be stretched out. And we talk about we can't maintain our roads. It means we're going to get usage on the roads in a smaller area. And if you think the urban growth boundary isn't an advantage, how do you like the roads in the county? So urban growth boundary, very important. It's a reason why Harper's Bazaar, I think, has recognized Petaluma, the city that I'm mayor of and have been for eight years as the best place in the world. So I will say that floodplain development has never made sense to me. It's a short-term asset at the expense of long-term liabilities. I've been to Washington achieving funding for our flood control project. They know how expensive it is. We know how expensive it is in Petaluma.
Mike Harris.
Thank you. The urban growth boundary protects us from sprawl. It's a very important component. It was passed in 1998. It was going to expire in 2018. I pushed to have it expanded to 2025 with others to coincide with our general plan that actually dictates our growth through 2025. So we're not going to sprawl, and we have managed growth through 2025. And that's a key component, which makes Petaluma unique and makes us all love Petaluma, and it pushes for the development inside the urban growth boundary. In respect to the floodplain development, obviously, we always have the hydrology analysis. We do our due diligence anytime anything comes before us, and we obviously do our due diligence before we do anything, move anything forward. So.
Thank you. Chris Albertson.
Thank you. I voted for the extension of the urban growth boundary when it came before council, to go out to 2025 to coincide with our general plan. I think it's an important aspect of the community, to the character of the community. The community, though, needs to realize that when we have, we are not going to expand outward. We're going to build within. And hence, there's the potential for higher density than what we might normally expect. But we'll do that with due diligence and planning for transit and for the infrastructure needs that we hope to have. As far as building in the floodplain, I'm opposed to any development in the floodplain that has proven to exacerbate potential downstream flooding. I was in 2005, our last major flood here in town, I was the incident commander for that incident. I don't want to see that type of experience again. I've asked staff recently with our EIR for Rainier to look for any potential downstream flooding and report back to that on the final EIR for Rainier. Thank you.
So the mystery of how Harper's rated us number one has been solved. It's not downtown, it's not the cheese, it's not the beer, and it's not the wine, and it's not the people. It's the urban growth boundary. I was an early supporter of the early growth boundary in 1998. I walked precincts for it. I think it's a great land use law. I supported its expansion to 2025 when it came up about four or five years ago, and I would support extending it into the 2030s. I think that has to be done through a citizen initiative at this point, but I would support that. I think the urban growth boundary is also more than a land use policy. It's a great social policy. One of the great features of Petaluma, which Harper's probably noted, was its green belt and its sense of place. People believe in this community, and part of it is that it's a relatively small, finite area. And I don't think expanding it so that we become part of Greater Santa Rosa is a good policy. As for floodplain development, I don't have much time to answer it. I think it's a bad idea unless there's mitigation circumstances, and they have to be significant.
Thank you. Do reserves need to be replenished, our funding reserves for the city? And if so, by how much? And what are your top three spending priorities with the new sales and property tax revenue gains? And we begin with Ken Quinto.
Well, yes, reserves are important. I mean, you can't run anything. You can't run a family, you can't run a city without reserves and savings. So looking at your budgetary process and your spending priorities, there needs to be a mechanism into that for reserves as well. That being said, you have to also pay for infrastructure improvements. We have a road and traffic problem. We have pothole problem. We have to fund Rainier. We have to get that going. We have infrastructure. We have plumbing. We have pipes that need to be fixed. We have parks that are in disrepair and are starting to get unsafe. So we have to fund those as well. So the, looking at the tax revenue that's coming in, we have to have those be a priority. Those have to be applied percentages, so that way those are funded. They're what the people want. We have to do that as a city council. That's what the people are voting for when they're voting for those initiatives. Their property taxes are identified for certain things. We have to use those for what the people are asking for.
Teresa Barrett.
Thank you. Yes, the reserves are actually critical, and if we did not have the reserves that we had that I believe were put in place when Janice Kater Thompson was on the council many years ago, they were built up and maintained and not broken into. We would have, we came dangerously close to being bankrupt or flirting with that, or certainly becoming some, some level of insolvent. We were down to $5,000 in our reserves, and we have, as a council, made a recommendation that we would bring our reserves back up to the 15% to 17% mark. And not only did we do that, but we made, the next meeting, we made a run on that money. So it's really, really important that we actually have real reserves. Thank you.
David Glass.
Well, this is my profession. As a municipal finance professional, I know the necessity of having reserves. If this city is going to go to the bond market, it's going to be imperative that the reserve accounts are strong. Having said that, top three priorities, street repair, street repair, street repair. I've been standing on people's porches. I've called you. I've had thousand conversations or more in this community. It's street repair, street repair, street repair. That's what the people want. That's what they're demanding. We don't have the luxury of a long list of priorities, one, two, and three. It's one, one, one. Until such time, traffic relief can be achieved, and then it's two. So street repair, traffic relief. But if you're going to bond, the reserves are going to have to be replenished. That's just a fact of the bond market. But I'll tell you this, you'd be able to borrow a lot more money at a lot cheaper cost if you had a special tax with designated money that wasn't vulnerable to be in access for pensions and perks. And that's just the truth of the bond market, of which I worked in for more than 20 years as a professional. Thank you.
Mike Harris.
Thank you. The reserves are obviously an important component of municipal finance. You don't take your budget and divide it by 12. You need to have the reserves. So through the cash flow throughout the, throughout the year, you need to obviously go up and down throughout the year. So it's a key component to have the reserves. And also, we just went through one of the biggest recessions back in 2007 and 2008, and it was very smart of the previous city councils to have the reserves. So we have the history lesson of knowing that it's very important, and that's why it's important to have economic development in order to kind of bump up our reserves as we go forward. We did have a policy, like was mentioned earlier, to have the reserves between the 15% to 17% to 20%. And we need to keep pushing for that number, so we have those reserve numbers in the future. In terms of priorities, it's infrastructure, fixing our streets, potholes, and of course, Rainier Crosstown Connector. Like I said before, I have a background in supporting Rainier from the beginning, a steadfast supporter for Rainier, and I'll continue to be a steadfast supporter of Rainier Crosstown Connector and Interchange.
Thank you. Chris Albertson.
Thank you. Reserves are important for the financial health of the city. It's a rainy day fund, and one that which we used already, and when we had the recession, that didn't affect Petaluma, didn't just affect the Sonoma County or State of California. It was nationwide. And we had reserves, and we tapped them, and we needed to, to maintain the services that you have come to expect, and quite frankly, you deserve. Even with that, though, we had to let go 15 police officers and take them off the streets. There have been improvements with the Deer Creek and the East Washington Place Shopping Centers coming online. Both of those, which should generate together, some between 1.2 and 1.3 million dollars in additional tax revenue. The riverfront development down off Hopper, the south end of town, will create 1,900 construction jobs, and will have a hotel that will bring in additional revenue to the city. And I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave King.
When the general fund goes from $48 million a year, as it was in 2007, to 32 million a few years later in a recession, and only bounces back to 36 million as it stands today, it's hard to be sitting here talking about the level of reserves. I think we do obviously need to have some reserves in the budget, and I would go with the direction of the finance manager with respect to that. We've talked about all our needs, and those are, I think, the priority of the citizens. In addition to losing the funding, we also lost the redevelopment agency money. So funds are down. This has turned, I guess, in part into a discussion on Measure Q. The voters are going to make their decision on that. But I would point out, since it hasn't been, that not every nickel that is put into taxes is dedicated to a specific cause. The US Congress, the state legislature, the county, and this city council all make budget decisions independent of what is directed by the citizens. Vote for somebody you trust to make good budget decisions.
Janice Kater Thompson.
I am happy that I was, or pleased that I was on a council that gave the city the reserve, and it was really the city manager that taught me, or the entire council, the importance of having a reserve. And that was a real priority, and that's what we did. And when the economy went down, that reserve really saved this city. I think it's really critical that we continue having a reserve, but it's really clear what the public wants. 84% of the public want their roads and infrastructure improved. Rainier is part of it. A crosstown connector is part of that, and I believe that we need to work with the county to get Corona as part of that, an improvement. But, but having a pension, having a reserve is important, and I think that's what, I know when I'm on the council, I would definitely push to make sure that we have more money.
Thank you. Our last question of the evening, as I read all of the things that came through and then say, okay, what's our last question? I think you can probably have fun with this one. Should a council member direct staff to prioritize issues based on citizen polling? Or is it his or her responsibility to review and prioritize for the citizenry? What is the primary job of a city councilman?
Well, that, that is a good question. You know, I think, okay, it's a two-part question. We, as a city, did some polling because we wanted to know about whether or not there was the ability to have a tax. Is this a one minute or one and a half? One minute? Okay, so cutting to the chase, there are times when you need to do polling. But, you know, an election really is a poll. You are telling us who you want, what you want, what values you agree with, what way you want us to act when we are elected by electing us. And several of us have a track record, and so you will be voting for us based on what we have done. Several don't have track records, and they're based on promises, and, you know, they're known commodities in our community, so it's not like you don't know them. But, you know, I think, I think polling people on everything is kind of redundant. You voted for us. We're here to do what you asked.
Thank you. David Glass.
Well, I think you do what is in the best interest of the community, and you use a lot of information to gather that. In terms of discretionary money for the city budgets, I want to point out, $36 million in the general fund is a lot of discretion right there. It's more to the historical averages. The 48 million that was referenced included a huge spike of money that came in as a result of redevelopment that was going on. That's not the normal amount of revenue the city would operate on. Measure Q is an extra $10 million. That's a lot of discretion. I don't think you'd go into a store and say, here's $10 million. I'm going to come back tomorrow. Let me know what you bought. And then I'm going to come back next year with another $10 million, and let me know what you bought with that. So it's looking at what needs to be done for the city, dividing up the resources in a way that you deal with the needs that are real, and to the degree possible, achieve the best outcome for this community, and that's what I've tried to do as your mayor.
Mike Harris.
Thank you. Polls are helpful, but at the end of the day, we're the elected officials. You vote for us. You're getting to know us during the campaign. I've been going door-to-door a lot, meeting a lot of people, and you're getting to know us and our values. Some of us, as mentioned before, have track records, so you know what we're about. But at the end of the day, we have, you vote for us, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to you to, to be there on your behalf when we're making these decisions, and incumbent upon us to take all of that information, be it the staff report, or if you meet with people, you meet with the proponents and opponents of issues, and come up with the best decision. But ultimately, the buck stops with us, and we're the decision makers based on your voting for the people up here.
Thank you. Chris Albertson.
I think polls are important. When you're making a decision, that especially in this issue, the Measure Q issue, is there support at all out in the community to move this thing forward? And there was the feeling that the support is there, and that's why we chose to move forward. And listening to the public, that's one of the things that the council member needs to do. Listen to what the public has, their feedback on issues. When you come here to council on this subject, when you send letters and emails to the council members, and we take all that into due consideration. The council, what's the job of council? Council sets policy. It sets policy based on what the public, our feeling of what the public wants to have happen, and following our city guidelines. So that's what we're doing, and I think we've done the last four years a pretty reputable job. Thank you.
Dave King.
The role of the city government is to set the public policy of the city. It isn't to run any individual department, but to set overall goals and direct in that way. The way you do that is through your own thought pattern and process, by working cooperatively with your fellow council members and mayor, by listening to the public, and not just the people who show up here on Monday nights, because there's a lot of regulars, and all due respect to them, they don't speak for the entire city. There's a lot of people out there with viewpoints. Whether or not we can implement those viewpoints, we do have an obligation to listen to those that are largely coming at us and important issues like what's been discussed tonight, fixing our infrastructure and roads and building crosstown connectors and things like that. I think it's important that, in the use of polling, polling can be helpful, but it shouldn't drive a leader in its decision-making. It's something that you can use as a tool. But certainly, our job is to make sure that we're doing what is in the best interest of the citizens of Petaluma in the broadest sense of the word.
That is what the job of the city council is, just to do the best interest for the community. And you have to look outside the council chambers and talk to a lot of different people and get a lot of different viewpoints. The council needs to work together, and I think Measure Q is And I think Measure Q is a perfect example. If the council would have been actually working together and talking, we probably would have had a half a sales tax for road and infrastructure. But instead, we have a 1% tax because the council majority was not listening to two members of the city council. Polls should not be the driving force, but 84% of the public want this infrastructure improvements. They wanted them since I was on the council. That's why I worked on the Washington intersection, the new northbound on-ramp. Those were important projects, and that has made traffic flow better in Petaluma. Is it perfect? No, it's not perfect. But we're a 150-year-old city. And so, we have to really look at the bigger picture. We need to go out and talk to the public. But as a council, you really need to work together and do what is in the best interest of the public. Thank you.
Ken Quinto.
Yes, the council sets the policy for how the city gets ran, and it's even bigger than that. I mean, we are the stewards of the city. We have to look forward to what's going to happen 10, 15, 20 years from now. Our decisions matter for the next generation, not just right now, not just what we see currently. So, you don't get numbers like 84% of people want roads fixed unless you have a poll. So, if there's something that's really important that you know the people are striving for, getting a poll so that way you can gauge the pulse of the city in the moment, in between a term, is an important tool. So, I totally agree that it's a tool. However, you vote for us based on how we feel and what we decide on and what kind of people we are, to make decisions that you are going to agree with, that you identify with. And that's what you want your city council to do. You have to trust them to make those decisions because you vetted them, you looked into them, you talked to them, and that's why you vote for them.
Thank you. Well, I have to say, your willingness to work for the citizens of Petaluma is just phenomenal. So, that's, you know, we're going to have a choice. And with that, we're going to begin with our closing statements. We also drew lots for that, and we begin with Mike Harris.
Thank you. And thank you again to, I'm sorry, two minutes. Thank you again to League of Women Voters and the AAUW for having this forum tonight. So, I just want to reiterate my three main points that I've been speaking about on the campaign trail as I'm talking to people out there, and of course, tonight. The number one priority is the Rainier Crosstown Connector and Interchange. The traffic woes in town are terrible, and that's one of the key components. I have a record of being for it, as evidenced earlier as I spoke. My opponent hasn't always been for it. He signed the ballot argument against it. And also inside, when he actually voted against Freedmans as well, there was a condition of approval in there that had two acres of set aside for Rainier, and he voted against that as well. Gets back, and number two is economic development in town. We didn't really get into some of the issues, but there is the fairgrounds there. We need to keep the fair there. There's a higher and better use that we can use for the fairgrounds in general. Number two, there's the station area plan around the train station. The trains come in town, so there's another opportunity. So, if I'm fortunate to be the mayor, those are two of the areas that I'm going to focus on, the train station and the station area plan, and of course, the fairgrounds for higher and better use. And as talked about tonight, just our general infrastructure from pothole repairs and our streets and our sidewalks. Again, my website is harrisforpetaluma.com. If you need to call me, my number is 773-3196. I'd be honored with your support in my race for mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And we come to the next mayor candidate, David Glass.
Thank you. I've served as your mayor for eight out of the last 12 years. I want to thank the League, as well as the American Association of University Women of Petaluma for hosting this forum tonight. I want to clear up some things about Rainier. The first project is a different project. It was a 1994 environmental impact report that said you had to build half of it before you'd know what it would cost to complete. It was so massive, it was the size essentially of the Golden Gate Bridge. It's a local street, no funding source. I'm not for pie in the sky that proved it can't be achieved. I don't think it's a feather in your cap to say you are for something that has failed over and over again. This is the draft environmental impact report for an undercrossing. I'm the only one that ever achieved significant funding for this. I got $11 million from the bank at the closing moments of JP Morgan Chase, redevelopment money from JP Morgan Chase. That'll allow us to go underneath. And that is a completely different project than accessing the freeway from the sky, which wasn't achievable. Friedman Brothers, I never voted against Friedman Brothers. I wanted, and council member Barrett wanted, an environmentally superior alternative that would have reduced traffic by 25% over the project that was approved, that included Friedman Brothers and a skilled nursing facility that we don't have in our community. A better mix of jobs, a better traffic model, 25% traffic reduction. And that's what I wanted. Review, improve, and if projects are improved enough, then approve the project. But don't just rubber stamp whatever the developer brings in, because you can see now that you're being asked to pay a blank check tax to make up the deficits of the short-term profits that have been achieved by developers at the long-term expense of this community. I know better. You should demand better. I'm up for reelection as your mayor. I hope you give me your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And city council candidates, we begin with Chris Albertson.
Thank you. Again, to my thanks to the sponsors for this evening, and again to you for coming out and listening to this. When I, opening comments, I made the statement about the best predictors of future behavior, past behavior, and how we voted. Well, you heard some of the discussion tonight. Points of view here on the Sonoma Clean Power, points of view, and I wish we'd had more time to discuss the issue of Measure Q, the one cent sales tax. Points of view on roads, the general asphalt of this city, and the Rainier Crosstown Connector of the candidates here. Stormwater, cash reserves for this city. You've got to hear about that. Public safety is another issue that was discussed in passing. Tonight's discussion is the beginning. Tonight's discussion is not the end for you to ask questions, to review past votes, to review the histories of all the candidates, and make a decision with that knowledge. Out on the table, there's cards and handout materials. Mine is out there with everyone else's. I encourage you to stop by and pick one up as you go out. I would like you to look at the endorsements. I've been endorsed by Congressman Jared Huffman, State Assemblyman Mark Levine, a majority of the current council, the Press Democrat, and labor and business affiliates throughout Petaluma and Southern Sonoma County. I want to thank you again for coming, and I look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave King.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank all the candidates for the office that I'm seeking for a very nice forum tonight. Recently, I attended the Taste of Petaluma, and I had a friend come up from out of town, and we started talking about all the things that go on in Petaluma. And her comment was that Petaluma is a doing city. It's a city that people participate in. I think this council could use a voice from the community that's been doing something for the community for 20 years. I think that's important. It's important to get a perspective advantage that isn't city-centric, city hall-centric. I think that's very important when you consider this. One of the things you have to do when you run for city council is toot your own horn. So, I'm going to give you some of the endorsements I have. I really don't like to do this. But I was endorsed by the Santa Rosa Press Democrat. I asked you to go to the website and read it. I was endorsed by Congressman Jared Huffman, Supervisor David Rabbit, Mike Healy and Kathy Miller, currently on the council, the Firefighters Union, the North Bay Labor Council, the North Bay Leadership Council, and the Sonoma County Alliance. That's a big variety of political views, liberal to conservative, business to labor. And I think that reflects where I'm coming from. We do need to start building decisions on policies based on better consensus and better consideration for the opinions of the others on the council as well as your own. I look forward to continuing the campaign. If you'd like to see my other endorsements, you can go to my website, as well as positions on other issues that weren't addressed here. I'm running because I like to solve some problems. We do have some problems with traffic. It is a mess. It's something that is intolerable, and we need to take action. We can't continue to find every road to know. We have to try to achieve something. That really is the goal of the next council, to try to resolve those issues. Thank you for your time tonight, and go Giants.
Janice Kater Thompson.
My work on the council was never limited to the confines of the council chambers. I held many community meetings at my home. Sometimes 10 people would come, and sometimes there'd be over 100. These gatherings often gave the public a voice, because sometimes you never feel like you have a voice. This was particularly effective during the negotiations over the wastewater treatment facility and Deer Creek, where the Friedman site is. My work with the developer of Deer Creek is an example of how working together avoids unnecessary confrontations. As a council member, I will bring that to the deus, and I will also bring that out to the community. I'm really proud of my accomplishments. I've been involved in politics since 1993, and I've had a lot of accomplishments as far as transportation. And what I always believed in, do what's achievable. And that's what one of the city managers taught me. He taught me that you needed a reserve fund and do what's achievable. And that's what I did when I was on the council. And the last project was the new northbound on-ramp. That was the last project that I had started, actually, in 1993, and it was completed. And I'm really proud of that project. And, you know, that was 23 years later. Sometimes you have to have patience when you're on a city council, but I have the patience. Age helps with that. And I'd really like to serve this community. I have a lot to give, and I ask you for your vote. Thank you. And I have a website. Please look up Janice Kater Thompson, and you'll find the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Quinto.
So, I want to thank you all for coming, and you all stayed in hearing about the Giants game score. So, and broadcasting it and partnering with television. And it's really great. We have such a great engaged community. I mean, when it was time for me to raise a family, that's when I came back to Petaluma. My mother, old Kennewith, old Petaluma, just, this is where you want to live. This is where it's happening. I mean, Harper's Bazaar, magazines are looking at, this is where you want to be. So, as your city councilman, then we look at decisions about getting Rainier funded, getting the roads fixed, looking at budgetary decisions that are complicated, being pragmatic, figuring out how we can move forward instead of how we can say no, wanting to get things done. That's the kind of attitude that I bring to the city council. Part of when, on our Little League Board, getting those lights put over at Maria, we did that all on our own. If you really want to get something done, there is always a way. You don't have to look for no. It's easy to look for no. It's hard to look for yes, because yes is complicated. Yes is sticky. Yes upsets some people sometimes. No is easy because you can move past it. But when you really want to get something done, and the people really want to get stuff done now, walking the neighborhoods, listening to people call up, I mean, they really want the council to be on the same page moving forward. That's the kind of attitude I bring now. All the boards I've sat on, the committees, I also have a website, kenquinto.com. I love that you guys are putting the lit out on the table, so you guys can go out and read stuff independently. You know, listen to how people are talking here, then go out, look at the papers they put together. Go out, do some research. Ask friends and family, do you know this guy? Do you know this lady? What do you think? It's really good. And I think you should vote for who you want to move the city forward. Vote your conscience. Vote for how you want these people up here to make decisions on what's going to happen here in town. And I appreciate your vote. It's going to be a wonderful council.
Thank you. Teresa Barrett.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to our hosts again this evening. It has been a very nice forum. I'm very pleased with how it's turning out. However, as other people have mentioned, there were just topics that did not get discussed. I think the two main major obstacles that, and of course, an obstacle is an opportunity, that face our city right now are the traffic and the water. We had almost no discussion tonight about water, and I think if you're really unhappy about sitting in traffic in Petaluma, you're going to be really unhappy about not having water coming out of your tap. We really have to get serious about the drought in this city, and I am not happy that our council has passed project after project after project on the basis, well, the water will be there, because we don't really know that. And I think now that we're in stage one of mandatory rationing, we should start thinking as a council about instituting temporary building moratoriums until we are out of a drought situation. I think that building housing without the water is just the same as building housing without the Rainier Crosstown Connector. You're stuck in traffic. You have the problem without the solution, and we don't want to go forward in any more like that. I think the real issues, as you cast your vote, are about integrity and credibility, because those are the qualities that you want in somebody who's going to be making decisions that you have to put a lot of trust into. Thank you very much for your support. You can check out my website and see that Jared has been very, very generous in his endorsements. As have other people. My time is up. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you so much to our candidates for your time, your energy, your insights, for giving the Petaluma citizenry a choice. And don't forget to vote on November 4th. Again, our sponsors, League of Women Voters of Sonoma County, Petaluma Chapter of AAUW,